I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Okay, Mark.
Yes.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
I need a motion to pay Rain and Green Incorporated two twenty-six oh five. I'll second that.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Mark. Jeremy.
Yes.
Pete.
Epstein.
Epstein, yes. Tim.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes. I need a motion to excuse an absent board member.
I'll make that motion also.
I can hog in the second, you guys go ahead.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, Pete.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Any correspondence? Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing. Public comment, uh, you guys got a second, we'll get to the principal superintendent's report and then we'll get public comment when we get to discussion items, does that work for you guys? Cobain. Superintendent's report.
Okay, several things to kind of walk around, there are different areas here. Most of it is, uh, about things we've been talking about so far. The new accounting system, I note that was mandated by the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESA or ESSA, however you choose to say it. Uh, I have to give my compliments to all the business managers I know pretty well, like Nancy and my wife Suzie and Katie at Chambers and Sherri up at West Boyd. The government buried them. With lines in accounting. Literally, uh, you guys are not gonna recognize some of the coding that might come up later on in line items that you're doing. I'm just gonna give you an example, like, I heard this a year ago or more, when this was first introduced, it comes from the superintendent from Bloomfield. Kurt Alexander says to Bryce Wilson from NDE, you mean, Bryce said, I'm the superintendent and secondary principal at Bloomfield, I also drive a bus, I coach football and I'm the assistant activities director. I have five roles I fill at school, instead of paying me my salary for all those different things and my holdings and all those different things, you're gonna have to break me out on five lines, and he said, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. So, Mr. Appleby, for example, is gonna be broken out of these three ways I can think of right now, as K-12 principal, basketball coach and activities director, I don't know if he does anything else, he does lots of things here. He'd be broken down for that too, so it's, it did get to be quite an arduous deal and the, the providers of our services, the, um, counting people that we subscribe to did a great job trying to help us out with it, but it was still a great deal of work. And I guess the motivation for it was to see how the poverty impacts education. I, I'm not going to try and explain why it is, but that's what the motivation seemed to be. Okay, um, and I told you this a little bit earlier, our new accounting procedure is, Ms. Harkster and I were required to run to a resume documenting our training and experience with budgeting and school finance. Uh, this will have to be submitted when we do the coming audit, so this is just part of the, the whole scheme of things, how much more they're requiring. I know we've touched on this a little bit earlier, but it's now becoming real, coming real live and here. I also am going to give you now, you asked these questions about the multi-tier student support system. Uh, we sent a group of our staff to that meeting, for the first of several meetings regarding that, this is a brief resume, a brief, I mean, brief description of what MTSS is. Seems to be some idea of it being required or not required, I don't think they'd be spending so much time trying to train us if they didn't have the motivation that it will be ultimately a big requirement. Uh, it stands for the Multi-Tier Student Support System. I'm not sure yet if it has two S's or one, you got enough over there, you guys?
We're good.
Okay. It involves integrating, uh, instruction based on evidence-based interventions and assessments to meet the academic behavioral needs of all students. The goal is to reduce the number of referrals for testing for special education services. It should begin with the universal screening of all students. That's, that's all, all students. From their evidence-based instructional interventions are provided to each student who needs them. Each student who is performing below expectations is then progress monitored. Throughout the process, database decision-making is used in adjusting instruction, setting grade level goals, identifying students who need additional assessment or instruction. Evaluation tools will be determined by what data we want to look at. And I think this is an example that Ms. Crop gave here, if we are looking at reading, then we would probably use DIBELS and would probably use MAP scores, uh, for math. It's basically reading and math intervention. Do wanna head off, uh, the number of referrals that, to special education if at all possible. I thank Ms. Crop for giving that to you, I also, uh, had a comment about it in the superintendent's report. It's EBA, Evidence-Based Assessment, and EBI, Evidence-Based Intervention. And it's going to add some, gonna add some time and work to, to our staff and to our people. Uh, Ms. Roland will be the party that's probably the point person on this program for us, along with our special education instructors and Mr. Appleby and myself as the administrators. Something else to contend with there a little bit. Uh, we recently ordered a new warming oven for the kitchen, you know, we've been on this program to spend down our reserve in our nutrition program. Uh, we ordered new tables for the lunchroom, we also spent that reserve down. I don't know how close we're going to get in spending the reserve down. A little bit later here, this, uh, next few weeks I guess, I'll be sending a follow-up letter to the nutrition department, seeing if our efforts have, uh, been successful. We're of course doing this to continue receiving our free and reduced, uh, benefits from, uh, the nutrition people. Uh, you also kind of blended into that, um, when you set lunch prices a couple of months ago, not raising them. And this year, the Northern Tier is required to complete its continuous improvement process. We collaborate with eight other schools in that process. The Tier, uh, is a group that we have met with for a number of years, I'm sure you're kind of familiar with that. The state has given our consortium several years back to do this as a, uh, uh, community of DA schools, previously, I think it was twelve schools started out, but there've been some reorganizations and some folks leave the organization, so that is also, uh, going to be conducted this year and you will have visitors from the state out later in the year to help with that, we will be working with our counterparts in the Northern Tier throughout this year, trying to get ready for it, starts at the end of this month here, a week or so. We'll have what is called a data dig. We'll start looking at scores and things that our schools are doing well and things we need to improve, which we do constantly and we'll blend it out and see what, what we get. Superintendent's report, finished.
Thank you. Principal report.
Um, obviously, we're, uh, going with fall sports there, our football team picked up a win last week, they're one and two, beat EBBJ. Uh, junior high team has a couple of wins, they're two and O. You've got seven junior high boys playing and eleven high school boys, uh, that are playing there, varsity volleyball's off to a good start, uh, they're seven and O, um, having a good season, JV's at your two and one, three and one, uh, something like that, so they're playing well. Also, uh, thirteen high school girls, we'll have two junior high girls, uh, that are playing with the OCE, uh, co-op over there. Um, do have, you'll probably see a build coming up here before too long, I took Ted out, uh, where we parked the bus at Travers, uh, Dan's been driving it, had a little accident pulling out of there, it's a tight squeeze and a tight fit and we tore off part of the, uh, garage, what would you say?
Frame, door frame.
Door frame, yeah, so I took Bill Tavern out there today to see if it's something that he would be able to, to fix, maybe with some of the shop guys, it's probably a little bit beyond him, uh, to do that, so we're still kind of looking at somebody to fix that up before we hit winter, uh, so wanted to inform you of that. Had homecoming went well, uh, around here, congratulations to the King Ryan Brummels and Queen Haley Rotherham, I think kids had a good week, things went well around here. Uh, I think we probably need to in October, uh, do our facilities tour that we usually do once a year, where I walk around the elementary building and the high school building, kind of take a look at things and, uh, just, you know, so you're kind of aware of things that are going on and, and things within the building, things that we need to point out to you, is that something you'd wanna do before the October meeting? Would that work, probably, half hour maybe, do it? Okay, we'll plan on that then, I'll, I'll let you know. Uh, we did take our fifth and seventh grade, our new guidance counselor, Ms. Choyeski, took them to NiPRA, to a fifth grade kindness and courage retreat, I think that went well, that's always, uh, it's kind of a good event for those kids as a kickoff the year and, and, uh, important in this day and age of, you know, be kind and to eliminate bullying and so forth, so I thought it was a good day for those kids. Uh, Ted talked about our external team review, that'll be happening in March, uh, where we have basically a team of five to six outside, uh, superintendents, uh, curriculum people come, take a look at our school, things we've been doing over the last five years, uh, part of that is things we do, like we took all of our elementary to those grade level meetings. The other day when we didn't have school on Monday, uh, took them to Elgin for that, the morning was spent all on this MTSS, uh, that Ted talked about, uh, support, and we had different things in the afternoon for them. Uh, as well as we've been teaching our, having our instructors go through this Marzano model of instruction that we are implementing across all of our K-12 teachers. Number of new staff here this year, uh, we're, you know, month in, uh, fifth week of the school year, I think, uh, they're all really doing a good job, pleased with, uh, the work all of them doing, it's, you know, when they're new, it's always new things that they're learning that we're learning as well, but I think all of them are working hard and, and doing a good job and are excited to be part of U.N. Public Schools.
They are, they're very nice group of people. Came in with so enthusiasm.
Right, largest number of new people that we've had, but they've, uh, they've really added to our staff and I think we're doing a good job, so. Any questions or?
Thank you.
All you got?
Discussion items. Kevin, you here for a beef in school discussion? Or just here?
Well, nothing, nothing has much progress on the, since last month, we're still kind of waiting on the, trying to set the, the donation part of it, so we haven't heard anything back yet, so.
Yeah, I got one question, did you get a chance to work with the county extension agent a little bit too, that we met last, governor?
I haven't talked to her.
I haven't talked to her.
Okay.
Area school plans and discussions. What are you gonna talk about? I think y'all were at the meeting last night, right? What are you gonna talk about?
What do I wanna talk about? Building a school?
We're, we're, we're open for public comment now, so.
Build a school, right, right where we talked about last night, maybe per se, into Summerland Road. I talked to one person today from Orchard that said there were a lot of younger people, I'll say from the age of twenty-five to forty that are very for this. My question is, is there a way to go about having some kind of meeting or something, maybe in the school where we invite all three towns or something to get behind this? Maybe to push the other boards to, I guess the way I took it, you guys are for it, right? Pretty much, I mean.
That's pretty good reading.
I mean, right? So, I kind of was asked by somebody in Orchard to maybe try to organize something showing that there's more support than per se the boards leading on, you know, and a comment was made that at the end of the day, it should kind of come down to the people to vote anyway. You know, rather
Well, I wanna, yeah, when it comes down to the bottom issue, it will be the people to vote.
Yeah, well, it will come down to that.
You know, and I guess my, my fear is, is, I, I don't wanna sound crazy about this, but it's like, let's wait another seven years, let's wait another ten years. You know, if we would've built this school in nineteen ninety-seven, we're probably talking about a thirteen million dollar school, right? So every year we wait, I mean, we're increasing the prices, stuff, what happens in, you know, I'm not saying I know for sure, but I'm pretty, pretty, in a pretty public eye, and it doesn't look like there's real strong numbers per se, the one to six-year-olds coming up. I mean, is this even gonna be feasible to, to build a school, say, ten years from now when there's six, eight kids in each class here? I mean, that's my fear, I guess I'm more worried about trying to push it now to where it makes sense, get the facility built, hope you draw maybe some people out of the Neely area, you know, ensure a school for our community for the next fifty years. And I, and I want, and I, I'm willing to, I guess, risk my business, risk everything, you know, I'm for it. I'm afraid if we don't, I'm gonna end up sending my kid to O'Neill at some point. And I, and I don't wanna do that, 'cause once we end up in O'Neill, I end up at the grocery store in O'Neill, in the lumberyard in O'Neill. You know, that's my fear.
Yeah, if you build it now when you have a four hundred student base.
You know, that's.
Even, even, even if thirty years from now that's cut in half, you've still got two hundred kids that go to school going yet.
You know, that's my, my fear and I'm, I'm, I don't know if there's, maybe, you know, Pete could have numbers all put together and have some kind of meeting with these people where we can maybe push the other boards into, I guess, feeling the same way you do, you know, if I can get enough people to show up, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking.
I think that's a good idea. I think we probably wanna talk to Clearwater to make sure they're on board.
Okay.
'Cause if they're not, and Orchard's not.
Then it's really kind of.
We're kind of fighting uphill battle. I think they are, but we need to actually hear that from them.
Okay.
So we're probably gonna try to set up a meeting with them, let them decide whether it's subcommittee or full board. That's kind of what we do with Orchard, they decide the full board.
Were you talking about having a town meeting?
Yeah, I'm talking about having, you know, Orchard, Clearwater, Neely can come in and, you know, if somebody wants to give up, give a speech about why they want it, you know, try to organize it, talk to the people. You know, business owners or people wanna stand up and say, you know, I'm for this or I'm against it. So everybody knows, I mean, that's, it's a consensus I got out of, the talk was, they wanted to know, you know, like, I, I mean, there's been talk, I've been, you know, I've talked to a lot of people, it's like, okay, now what happens to Rotherham Tire Service, is he gonna get the month of November? In the month of January, or, or where, where's that go, what's that takeaway from the Ewing businesses or the Orchard businesses or the Clearwater businesses that are doing it, you know, the grocery stores, does a grocery store get, does U.N. Family Food get this month, does, you know, Clearwater get this month, does Orchard get this month? You know, there's things like that that I think, that if them things were answered, you'd have a lot more community sport behind you, in, in my opinion.
You can't answer them, you can hope to say, you can't say, no, this is how it's gonna happen.
I think you can kind of mandate where you buy.
Huh?
I think you can mandate where you buy.
Oh, definitely, but that, I mean, that has to be a decision, that's, you know, it, it's gotta be equally
Yes.
proportioned out.
Yes.
And I would think that everybody would, would, would agree with that, but
Well, it's, it's only fair.
Now to say, no, it will be done this way, you can't do that. I mean, it'll say, you know, we hope that it would be done this way, ev- everything is equal, you know, every school will get, every town will get an equal distribution of what we purchase.
Well, I mean, that's the most resistance I'm feeling is, you know, our town's gonna die, the fear, I guess the fear of losing the school, our town's gonna die.
I think that's exactly backward though.
I, Pete, I'm on your page, I think our town's only gonna grow, my opinion is, is if Addison's going to school with thirty kids, I might have thirty new kids eating my business.
The jury, Anna's done that study, he agreed with me on that, he said, what happens when the school gets so expensive and you start taxing your kids from being, coming back, you lose the kids, therefore, the town has no commerce. And that's where I'm at.
I mean, that's my, I'm on, I'm on the same page you are, because you know Eddie Rotherham made the comment to me last week that he's picked up quite a few customers in the last couple of years from going over and playing football, Chambers customers that he never had before. And that's because Eddie was standing on the sidelines and struck up a conversation with somebody that's been buying tires in O'Neill and said, well, I might as well drag them to Ewing, you know, there's, there's a relationship built. You know, and that's, that's why I think it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, in my opinion, to, to push for it.
But, but the meeting, you're, the community meeting you're talking about, is this something you just wanna have just community members come, or do you want school board sitting up in front of the room?
Well, that's what, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to handle it, that's what I'm saying, is there, I, I, that's why I'm asking you guys, I mean, I think I could get forty, got forty, forty guys from Orchard to come over to the meeting, I'm not saying they're all gonna be for it or against it, but I think that if you said this is what we were gonna talk about, I think that I could, I would say at least twenty of them would show up for sure. You know, and I'm, you know, I'm betting you'd have kind of the same numbers from Clearwater and I'm betting you'd have the same, and, and I'm, and I'm thinking it's gonna be more of the youth of the community, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
The, like I said, thirty to forty-year-olds that got two, three-year-olds or six-years-old that are, that are looking at the the next twenty years of U.N. Public School, not the next seven. You know, and that's, that's the way I felt about the meeting last night. In Orchard, it was like, let's just wait seven more years. What are the num- what are the numbers in seven more years, guys, I mean, what? You know, what's our, what's our elementary look like in seven more years, you know, that's, that's my fear.
Well, and that's the way, I guess you could advertise it as a, as a, as a public forum encouraging all, all community members or school board patrons from, or school patrons from U.N., Orchard and Clearwater to attend this meeting. And then just turn on a microphone and say, anybody's got a comment? And get, and get, get the meeting, get something rolling, start it that way, see how many people you get, show up to, that would, that would be willing to comment on it.
Yeah, but you're gonna be able, you're gonna have to be able to, to throw nuts and figures.
Yeah.
That's why.
You're gonna have to be able to say, this is what we're.
We're gonna buy do like we did when we tried that unified deal. Had the gym full, I have a comment box, they drop comment in at, at the end. If they don't wanna speak, you read the comments, if they wanna speak, you certainly hear it.
Cause you still want all the school board members there.
But I mean, I don't know how you can do that legally though, you'd have to have some kind of meeting if you're have, cause otherwise you'll be.
You'd have to be advertised and.
Yeah.
It'd be, you know.
For all three schools.
Yeah, if you have the school boards together, they're one.
That's what I'm saying.
We require advertising, but the organizations that I've experienced and been through, you will have more than one, uh, gathering of, uh, large group of the people involved from the communities involved, you probably have, uh, two to three anyway, but you gotta have that first one sometime, yes.
Well, I think the gym would be full.
Yes, it would be, and I, and again, it's all gonna, the plans would have to be voted on by the people and ultimately has to pass all three or four, or however many you're talking about.
We're talking three.
Well, three only makes sense, I mean, you can run a calculator, right?
What's that?
If you can run a calculator, only three makes sense, correct?
Those was my calculator.
I just, like I said, I mean, I was kind of asked that today. I, I didn't know if there was a way to go about doing it or. I mean, do I make T-shirts and start selling with the bar for five bucks? If you build a table come, hashtag OCE, I mean, I, I, I'm just asking, like.
You're gonna, you're gonna get on copyright infringement, you're gonna have to pay somebody for that.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, what, what's a guy gotta do to show that there's, I guess my opinion, I just would like to see this go to a vote at some point, let the people decide.
I think you have to be ducked and really do all that, I mean, I think everything has.
That will happen, it'll have to happen.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to this meeting at all, but I know you're gonna have opposition. Obviously, Terry made the comment that she has to talk to one person that's for it, so rather I don't know who she's talking to, so you're gonna have opposition.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, and that's why I almost, for this, you know, maybe a spur of the moment meeting, encourage you to, to do, have a meeting without any board members there, just have to be community members.
So is it something that I can get to gym or?
Sure.
I mean, if I.
We can have a facility and, and, uh,
Turn the lights on.
Open it up, get the microphone and so forth, I, I'm not sure you wanna put, in that type of meeting, put someone on the spot to answer questions that may not, it, it probably needs to be a community where those people share and get what other communities feel.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm not even sure how to handle it, okay, you know, it's just like, uh, all right, say Joe Blow from Kokomo gets mad at Joe Blow from Kokomo, who's kicking him out?
At that point, do you have one of them surveys sitting there that they can pick up?
Well, I, no, I mean, I'm not, I, I, that's what I, that's what I, but you know, if we're in this board meeting, I get ruled, I mean, it's all right there on the wall.
I would be asked to leave, you know, I mean, I don't know how bad it would get, but it's just.
It could get bad.
I mean, it could get bad and I hate to be the guy.
I don't think it would.
Cause I imagine there'd be somebody with a camera there filming the whole thing, if somebody got two of them really, and probably multiple people there with cameras filming it, so.
Somebody probably shut the lights off when that happened too.
I guess my opinion, I guess what needs to happen first, if all these people from Orchard are interested, you know, I know they did their survey and I, I didn't understand the survey, but I think they need to get on the school board's butt and say, hey, look, we need to look at this, I think it starts with the Orchard community talking to their board members.
Does there need to be a survey sheet there that people can mark an X and drop in a box when they walk out if they want?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know?
That.
They don't even have to publicly, you know, do you want this or?
What town are you from and are you for this or against?
Well, I mean, and I think some of the problems with everything that's took in place is, you know, and I'm, I'm gonna get into the, we'll take the whole Neely deal right away. It was, we never knew where the school was, I mean, if we can say, you're starting this and we're, we're, we're ninety-nine point five percent sure that it's going at the end of Summerland.
We're not.
Area. But I'm just saying, if, if you start and say, you know, you, all three boards agree, then, then, then you've got a place to go.
I think it's a good place, I think we'd have free lawn care. Right, Josh?
I think you'd have opposition right there, because you know Clearwater don't want it there.
I know, but. Yeah, and I've talked to them about that a little bit, you know, I know they want it there, but you know, you could have it on two seventy-five, but that's not gonna fly in Orchard, just like if you have it up on
On twenty.
Highway twenty, it's not gonna fly for Clearwater, so there's really only one place, we can all see a triangle
Exactly.
And know where the middle of it is.
Exactly.
The middle is feeling the rest.
Clearwater wants it on two seventy-five. And then Orchard's gonna say, no. And that's.
So then we're just gonna go
Well, if you get.
Seventy-five years and then seventy-five years from now, we're gonna be.
If you wanna get to a building and save some money, you gotta give, have some concessions. Everybody's gotta give a little. You can't all have everything.
I know.
The two seventy-five deal's great and, great idea, but it's a swamp. You get a lot of problems building up.
How, how, did you ever check into the, on the road, with the Nebraska Department of Roads or the state?
As far as I'm sure, I have not, some, some point in time I will.
You would, it probably would become a link if, when you suppose that the school was built, you know, like.
Well, but, but I think it's been good enough for the last nineteen years for Orchard and Clearwater kids driving up and down it the whole time.
But it hasn't been good, that's the problem, there have been a lot of accidents and a lot of parents from both schools, when you've gone to meetings, like in the last five years, I've probably heard twenty sets of parents complain about the Orchard Road, so there's issues there too.
Yeah.
Are they complaining at the board meeting or at their county commissioner meeting?
They're complaining at the board meeting, and that's part of the problem.
And that's the wrong, that's the wrong place.
You need to go to the county commissioners meeting and, and talk to the road boss.
Yeah.
It, it still comes back to.
Coming from you, we would have our struggles there too, because.
That's right.
We've tried Clearwater to see.
I've traveled to Josh's house.
And Low County part of that road's.
Yep, yep.
They told me that wind farm up in O'Neill.
We, we're still at, where Pete started this conversation out at, gotta talk to Clearwater and. gotta talk to Clearwater and see if they're willing to go too, and and then after that, I think start picking up some of the questions and some of the concerns you're raising now, but that's probably still at the start there, we have to see what their intentions might be. Conversation's gotta happen.
Again, my question is, when you had said that if Orchard is not interested, you said that we probably consolidate with Clearwater. Now, is that, is that everybody's consensus there?
That's my thought.
That's your thought.
And I know that is from some in Clearwater. I don't know that all, all Clearwater is that way.
But you're bored, I mean, it's, I mean, that's something that I think definitely needs to be discussed with the people.
I don't know that we can continue.
Which I hope it does, I am for this, but.
I don't know that we continue spending twenty-two thousand a kid for education. Same as we are doing today.
I guess, and I, to me, that situation for me would be, I know what we can house here, as opposed to what they can house there. And I think then you would be taking stuff away from them. Because I don't think we could hold as many, I mean, you guys knew that at that.
Well, the comment by a couple of the board members is we would, uh, help pay to put additional room here. From the Clearwater district. Whether that's the field or people, you don't know.
I don't think Ewing would wanna give up. I mean, I, I'm not saying, I, I think we'd wanna be just as equal.
Exactly.
You know, and I don't think.
Exactly.
You know, cause once you consolidate, that is a permanent deal, like, and I guess I'd, I guess I'd like to have a town meeting on that, if that situation did arise.
We're not to that point yet, we need to see where the other deal goes first.
Yes.
As far as Plan B, I guess that was our Plan B.
Yeah, and that's what I was hoping.
Plan C is doing what we're doing.
Plan A is still back to talk to the Clearwater.
Plan A is, uh,
Get the three together.
One building.
Yeah.
Three towns, better curriculum. Cheaper cost. Stable future. Stable future.
Yeah, just what Terry's saying, yeah.
What's your, what's your guys' opinion? Did you think it went well? Did you think it, or do you think we backed them in the corner?
Oh, I don't think there's no backing anybody in the corner yet.
I mean, you basically give them two opt, well, you give them, you give us, you give them our, our two options. Either this or that.
I've always been told, what does Ewing want? That's what I keep hearing. What does Ewing want? That's came from Orchard, that's came from Clearwater. We told them what we wanted.
Any other comments? Come on, it's eight o'clock yet.
Getting there, right?
Well, can we say something controversial, get something going there?
What was the savings on the, if, if it would happen to be Ewing and Clearwater? What was the savings on that?
I haven't come up with that. It'd be a high school one place, probably seven A one and K six the other. You'd save some money, but I don't think you'd save as much of the three school system.
But you'd have classes of.
You'd have classes a little bigger.
Would, you know, and see, that's my problem, I guess. That's, that's another reason. I just believe if you have a classroom of thirty, eighteen, twenty, you have somebody pushing you in a classroom. Get a classroom of six, there's not a lot of places for kids to fit in.
Rita, I guess if we get to that point, what I was thinking is those gentlemen from Wayne, they could throw us a budget together that way. Cause they do the staffing. We have a pretty good idea what it might cost before we jump and run.
Okay, well, that's what I, I would hope.
Yeah, you have, you gotta do that. Because we'd rarely ever see the numbers of just us and Clearwater. We'd have to be able to see those numbers.
And I think they could do that, cause they got our information.
Yeah, yeah, they already got the information.
I mean, I, I, when you threw that out there, that was your, basically, if this don't happen, we're gonna consolidate with Clearwater our way. Whoa. I mean, that's what.
Well, we're not, we'd rather have three. There's no question of that.
Because I do believe, you know, consolidation is a permanent deal. I mean, it's something you can't get out of. You know, and if it's not working and all of a sudden everything's over there and hardly anything's here, what happens?
I personally believe consolidation's better than a co-op anyway.
I agree with that.
If, if it's equal, if it's equal, yeah. If it's equal, it is.
Consolidation and co-op are two different things.
They're two different things, but we got them separated. You could, you could, uh, for instance, uh, consolidate and still co-op, uh, the other night, uh, Crofton played Bancroft, Rosalie, Lyons, Decatur, uh, whatever, Logan View. Four schools that have potentially communities have definitely put together and played the alphabet school. And so forth. So you, you could co-op even after you consolidated if you needed to.
Well, here's a question I got. Let's say Clearwater and, uh, Orchard and Ewing consolidated. And they kept individual sites. Which I'm terribly against, but.
But individual sites, meaning everybody has their own K twelve or K four or five eight?
Yeah, they have their own K twelve.
Okay.
Can Orchard consolidate, uh, co-op sports with somebody else and we could go someplace else?
Okay, that's one school district.
That's one school district.
Just like Omaha Public Schools is one school district, but you've got Omaha Northwest, Burke South, Lincoln's one school district. You've got six schools, yeah, you can.
So that one district can consolidate three different directions, go one to.
Co-op, yes. There's all kinds of goofy co-ops.
Yes.
There's baseball ones, there's high school baseball ones, Wahoo High School, Lincoln Lutheran, Raymond Central, just because they needed a few baseball players from everybody to put a team together. You can kinda co-op. Whatever you want.
So you're saying if us, if us three, if us three consolidated, we kept our own schools, we could still go over to Chambers and play football?
That's what you're saying.
That's what you're saying. Because.
And Orchard and Clearwater could go to Vertigree and Creighton or Neely.
Because, you know, Omaha has got its own districts, yes. But within the district, they can do this, but can you go outside of your district and co-op with Chambers?
See, that's what I, that's what I think you cannot do.
I think so. I would have to check, but I.
Think so?
Right.
You know, there aren't many school districts that have multiple high schools. I mean, Omaha, Lincoln, I mean, cause Grand Island, Northwest is a separate district. Grand Island High, you know, Carney just has one. I'm trying to think of another.
Figure one I like to have.
Can you think of one, Ted?
No, not, not a larger one, no. Like I say, I know Crofton played, uh, the four community. Dual, dual consolidated, two consolidations, one co-op.
If they're within a district, there's still one.
Yeah, but you're still one district, so if, if one district, if one district only had ten kids going out, you know, one combined district, how? I suppose then you could if the numbers weren't.
I just don't think you could, Ewing could go to Chambers and Orchard could go to Creighton.
But I think it would have to be like O C E goes and plays with Creighton. If you made the decision.
Well, but you're different high schools.
No, but you're still one district.
No, but.
Well, yeah, but Omaha Public Schools is a little district.
High school though, what Greg's saying, it makes sense.
Well, you know, I mean, cause Clearwater, Orchard and Vertigree are one district, and Vertigree goes and plays with Ibras.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, definitely.
But they're, that's not a permanent district.
That's, yeah, it's not permanent.
It's, it's permanent in state's eyes.
For seven years.
For the time that it's.
The state is going by enrollment.
Well, hey, let's just throw Vertigree in, let's bring Chambers in, let's just go to school.
The, the state activities association is going by numbers that you give them. They're, you know, they're not, they're not discriminating where you get the numbers from. You could get the numbers from an Ibras, Vertigree combination. That's what they're going by for the sake of those people competing with, with each other. The state is the one that's drawing the district lines and giving you your autonomy as a as a school to levy taxes and do things. But the state activities association is going by compensation and numbers that you provide for that competition. Well, I think you'd have way better unity if, if you were consolidation.
I agree with Kevin.
I just don't wanna.
Like the whole process, the hill.
Co-op's okay, but it's just a, it's just a Band-Aid, I mean.
It doesn't really address the problem. You're lowering the student count for your educational classes.
I believe it has to be all three schools.
Is it a possibility that you know you could take pre-K through three, I don't know, and put it at one school and then put something somewhere else and start, start it? I mean, in a, I'm saying, I'm saying in a unified part of it, where none of it's binding, you know, for the next three years to see if we can all get along, and then you turn it around and say, it only makes sense to build a school, we're used to this? I mean, is that something that's?
Well, first question I've been told, I don't wanna have to pick my kid up at three sites.
Okay, that.
The third grader here and the fourth grader there.
That makes sense. Yeah, I, I guess that, and that makes sense. I never thought about it. I was just.
Plus, you're getting upkeep on three building sites.
Pete, I'm on the same page as you are. It only makes sense to build it down the road. I mean, you, and why wouldn't you?
But that's one comment I heard. I don't wanna have to go three different places to pick up kids. Cause they gotta be there at the same time.
Then if it's not in our favor, then what?
Well, and that's, and, but that's the, you start fighting, then we end up like Clearwater and Orchard don't like each other, right? I mean, at the end of the day, really?
If you're one, you're all pulling for the same thing.
I know.
Yeah, if you've got that one central site, yeah.
Yeah.
Other, I mean, I, I, I have, I have told the Orchard ladies that why would we wanna join you in unification? You know, we're gonna want a piece of something, so it's only gonna be no I want, no I want, no I want. I mean, to me, that's what, it'll just be another person in on the bike. I think it begins with Orchard's people talking to Orchard's board. And I don't know if that's gonna happen.
I think it might.
After last night, maybe, I don't know.
Man, it's already started.
I think it starts with a show of support meeting from the three towns in Ewing Public Gymnasium.
That would help, that would help.
That's where I'm at. That's, that's why I'm set here, I guess. I mean, I don't know, just to show a support. You know, like I said, I'm worried about stability. That's why I'm here. I'm worried about, I'm not worried about, no, I'm worried about forty years from now. I'm worried about when my kids got kids in school. I mean, that's why I'm here.
I did have somebody tell me today, they'd like to see the way you said your numbers on paper with something to back it up, and I said, well, it's on paper.
It's in that study.
But.
But that's what I'm saying. If you have a projector, make it up and.
The landlords, or, you know.
Yeah, it has the Orchard.
Not have to go run it down, yep.
It's not hard to figure out, though.
No.
I still have that. I know what you passed out to us.
What's that?
Isn't that the papers that you brought to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's on paper.
That come out of the study.
Probably on their website. Isn't it, isn't the, la, la, all the feasibility studies on our website?
I mean, if one school's levy's eighty-three and then, and they unified it's sixty-two, you just subtract the difference and take it times evaluation, that's what they're receiving out of you.
Yep.
Benefit. Yeah, that's gotta be. You will set that up.
So do you want us to do that before you do the Clearwater meeting, or would you rather us say?
What's that?
You guys wanna do the Clearwater meeting and try to line something up with Clearwater before I try to get something?
Yeah, we gotta get, see where they're at for sure. Otherwise, we're probably, uh.
Yeah, if they say no, obviously we're.
They might feel, they might ha, if they do have any different feelings about it, it might get a little more that way if they think the two of you are running ahead without doing more with them. I think it's prudent to talk to them first.
We don't want to leave that.
The advantages of putting it together were very well outlined as we went through the last year with the Neely, Clearwater, Ewing situation, that items you can put into your curriculum and the things that the state is beginning to demand with their career uh, tracking for vocational people, uh, medical people, technological people, whatever it is, college ready, work, uh, work ready, et cetera. Gotta happen. You just need to have the kids to do it.
Dustin, the feasibility study from, uh, two thousand sixteen's on the website.
Okay.
When you go to, uh, public notices feasibility study, it's hundred and twenty-two pages there, and it's the one from December of sixteen that included Clearwater, Orchard.
Clearwater, Orchard.
Yeah, and I have copies of all other ones in my office too.
I'll load you my copy.
I gotta copy.
Go through it if you want.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's air conditioned.
Alright, move on to action items. Through the adoption of the eighteen nineteen budget.
I'll make the motion to adopt from eighteen nineteen budget is for you.
I will second that.
Moved by Tim and seconded by Pete.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Pete?
One more last time.
Go ahead and do it again. One more last time, huh?
So now you need a motion to approve the tax levy, tax setting levy resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Pete, seconded by Jeremy to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen tax levy resolution. Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Set next meeting date.
I don't take off, I gotta bring you the truth, gotta get it out.
You have to have it by the third Monday?
That's what you.
That's what the state law is, though, isn't it?
Yeah. But I know, I know a lot of them fend around that if they have to. But that, that's what you try to do, yeah.
Eleven, we have volleyball home of St. Mary's that night. But they've only got enough varsity. Starts at six. A last.
So you're saying afterward?
Let's do it afterward.
Seven thirty, I think. I would agree.
Um, we gotta have.
There's no JV, seven o'clock.
We gotta have something. Is there like a preliminary meeting before the meeting next month, or something we gotta do before others?
Uh, we wanna do, if we wanna do that.
Oh, that walk around.
Walk around. Oh, we do that at seven?
What's the eleventh? Is the eleventh or Thursday?
Seven, eleven's Thursday. Seven thirty meeting.
Seven o'clock walk around?
Yeah, which is seven o'clock, facilities tour.
What date was that?
Should we go to do the?
October eleventh.
Walk around for it again, right?
Walk around before our Clearwater meeting.
Could do it either way, but we don't know when that's gonna be yet. When do you want?
Never worked for the rest of these guys. Unflexible.
Thursdays are, Thursdays are better than Wednesdays are possible.
I'll, I'll shoot you guys. Everybody gets my text and settles it out.
I'll I'll shoot you guys, everybody gets my jacket and settles out.
We're we're at seven o'clock on the eleventh?
Seven o'clock, we'll plan a tour, seven thirty meeting event, we'll see you. If we get a meeting with Clearwater before then and we have time to do the tours, we can do it before that, I'll give them a call.
Eleven then?
Here's more.
And then you gotta stick around, cause you have to make a choice, this gentleman's had a tough.
Well, can be adjourned, remember he's sticking around?
Yeah, he was sure.
Okay, so you need a motion to adjourn.
I don't care, I wanna go get, go get.
Herman months. Eighteen eleven, we got seventy-seven. Old catcher? Old catcher.